Oh, man, putting out fires. I got one that... One of these guys got your...
No, we moved you down since Samantha's not here.
It is four o'clock. We'll go ahead and call this February 28th meeting in the Salina City Commission Order. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Peck?
Here.
Commissioner Angel. Commissioner Larson... Jennings?
Here.
Mr. Jennings?
Here.
Commissioner Larson?
Here.
Commissioner Vanier?
Here.
Would you please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. This time we'll have the Citizens' Open Forum. If there's anyone here today that would like to come up and discuss something with the Commission that is not on today's agenda, you're welcome to do so. Please come up and state your name and address.
Hi, my name is Dennis Benoit. Address 1773 20th Road over Conoplis. I'm back again to just ask you to review the fluoridation of our water supply. I know you have been very helpful and you gave... I acquired this and it is within the federal guidelines, but I'm asking you to please step back and let's review all the facts, all the research, and see if we can see any of the new stuff that's coming out. And so, let's do a little history. What was the government doing about 62 and a half years ago when Mr. Ewing was bringing in the fluoridation of the water during the Truman years? He was a Wall Street lawyer for Alcoa. So, I'm trying to draw a little link there because you get fluoride basically from the aluminum plants. And what was happening 62 and a half years ago? If Kathleen Sebelius was here, she could tell you about how our government dollars was being spent down in Guatemala. Some bad research was going on down there. She affixed her name to an apology just within about two months ago. I would hope you recall it. You can Google it online. But they were doing some research into syphilis and gonorrhea with Guatemalan prisoners. And my mother and dad wouldn't have agreed with that and I sure don't either. About that time, let's see, the Manhattan Project was going on and we needed the atomic bomb to stop the World War II. So, we got it and that stopped the World War II. But to get it, Curran McGee was in charge of mining the radioactive material. And the miners were Native American. And shortly after they stopped mining it, they started coming down with all sorts of diseases, cancers, and they kept... After they put two and two together, they said, "Well, how about helping us out? How about some help, compensation or something?" Well, it was a 50-year battle for them because the government did the old delay, delay, deny, deny game. So... And then, well, if that sounds familiar, then a little closer to home, let's say, what happened to the Agent Orange people? That was the defoliant used in North Vietnam, South Vietnam. That was this deny, deny, deny. So, what I'm just saying is, let's look at some of the newer research. And especially what I'm concerned about are the children. Because according to most of the stuff now, it could be IQ drop. It's associated with IQ drop or developmental problems. A connection between fluoride and a certain type of bone cancer in young males that was very extremely rare a few decades ago, but now it's not. And so, they're proving that link. And of course, like last time I'd said, like November 2006, the American Dental Association had advised the parents should avoid giving babies fluorinated water. And so, I'm just saying, well, if that's true, then you shouldn't give fluorinated water to the babies. You shouldn't mix their formula with fluorinated water. Whether... I know you've never voted on it. And so, I would just like to see, well, could we put some literature out there? Let the people of Salina finally decide or let you know what... If they want to continue it or not. And that's basically it. Okay, thank you.
Dennis, thank you for coming and sharing those comments today. And as we mentioned previously, I know our staff is keeping up on the latest research that's out there regarding fluoridation. And it hasn't been a primary concern for most of the community that I've spoken with, but it's certainly something to make ourselves aware of and keep track of. And I appreciate your concern. Move on to public hearings and items scheduled for a certain time.
Item 5.1, Public Hearing and Report on Petition Number 4335 Requesting the Vacation of the North 20 Feet of the 40-Foot Utility Drainage Easement Located on Lots 1 and 2, Block 2 of the Riffle Edition Number 2. Sub-Item 5.1A, First Reading Ordinance Number 11-10,591.
Go ahead and open the public hearing. Mr. Andrew.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. This is a public hearing to consider a petition filed by Norm Riffle, a property owner, who's requesting to vacate the north 20 feet of a 40-foot utility and drainage easement that's located out in Riffle Edition Number 2. And Riffle Edition Number 2 is located on the west side of South Ninth Street, north of the Long MacArthur Ford dealership. And it occupies land that was formerly owned by KDOT and used as part of a set of ramps that provided access from I-135 to Ninth Street. With the reconstruction of Schilling Road interchanged, those ramps were abandoned and Mr. Riffle acquired ownership of the property and platted it in 2009. He now has an interested party that's looking at developing a hotel and conference center in that area. They first looked on the north side and secured property there, but now have shifted their interest to the south side. And they've laid out a number of hotel layouts and parking layouts and find that the north 20 feet is interfering with those plans. So, Mr. Riffle has filed this petition to vacate the north 20 feet of that. And utilities have been contacted. Nobody has an objection to that as long as the south 20 feet is still retained and there's a matching easement provided on the Long MacArthur property to the south when it's platted. So, we've had no objections to this with those conditions and the ordinance that you have in front of you has been prepared with that in mind. I'd be happy to address any questions.
Are there any questions of staff?
There's an illustration in your packet that shows the 40-foot easement and the shaded area is the north 20 feet of that. And that's what they're wanting to eliminate as far as being an easement.
Are there any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any public comment? If not, I'll accept a motion. Go ahead and close the public hearing. Thank you. Now, I'll accept a motion.
Mayor, I move that we adopt ordinance number 11-10591, the public hearing and report on petition 4335 filed by Norm Riffle.
Second.
It's been moved in second that we adopt ordinance number 11-10591. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion passes four to zero. Moving on to the consent agenda.
Item 6.1, Approve the Minutes of February 14, 2011. Item 6.2, Approve the Minutes of February 23, 2011. Item 6.3, Acceptance of a Public Sidewalk Easement Dedication on the South Side of Magnolia Road on Lot 1, Block 1 of the Key Acres Edition. Item 6.4, Award of Contract for the 2011 Structure Demolition, Project Number 112855 to TNR Dirt Construction, Amount of $11,625. Item 6.5, Award a Bid for 50 Personal Computers with Windows 7 Professional Operating System to Envision Computer Solutions, an Amount of $31,200. Item 6.6, Authorize the Repair of the Filter Building Hydraulic Freight Elevator at the Water Treatment Plant, Project Number 112866, to Thiesencroup Elevator, in the Amount of $42,881.
Is there any item a Commissioner would like to see removed from the consent agenda? If not, I'll accept a motion.
Mayor, I'd move for approval of the consent agenda. Second.
It's been moved in second that we approve the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes four to zero. Moving on to development business.
Item 7.1, Application Number C11-1 Requesting an Amendment to Section 42-59 in Article 4 of the Salina Zoning Ordinance to add Consumer Fireworks Facility as a permitted temporary use within the city. Sub-Item 7.1A, First Reading Ordinance Number 11-10,592.
Mr. Andrew.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. This is an application for an amendment to the city's zoning ordinance. Since 1989, the City of Salina has had regulations in place that deal with transient business activity that operates in temporary or movable structures and not part of a permanent retail operation. And some examples of these would be mobile food vendors, tent sales, Christmas tree lots, flea markets, things like that that occur outdoors but don't necessarily involve a permanent structure or building. And so, as part of that process, a list of approved temporary uses was adopted. There was an application procedure that was set out for that. Individual requirements for individual types of uses was established. And requirements that sites be cleaned up and restored when the activity was over were just some of the elements of that. And the idea was to have a level playing field for merchants who operate out of permanent buildings and meet local building codes, that there at least be some regulation of that activity. And so, most of that occurs on weekends or three-day weekends or week-long tool sales, things of that nature. So, with the adoption of the fireworks ordinance in January, there was a need to go back and address the temporary use regulations in the zoning ordinance to establish a permit for consumer firework stands that would be happening this year and into the future. So, this item was referred to the Planning Commission to get input from them. And also, we got some input and comments from people who think they would like to set up stands. And so, on February 15, there was a public hearing held by the Planning Commission. They reviewed the draft that you have in front of you and recommended that it be approved with a couple minor changes. And I would just summarize here to refresh you on what was adopted back in January. This is intended to implement that. But if you want to set up a consumer fireworks facility or stand, it could only be in a C3, C5, C6, or C7 zoning district. And so, that's going to put you on Broadway or South Ninth or districts that have a lot of retail activity and large parking lots. So, school sites, churches that have parking lots, things like that would not be permissible locations for stands under this proposal. So, you'd be focusing on retail sites that had surplus parking. The limitation would be for tents and canopies only. We've had some inquiries from people who had constructed trailers that they'd used at different places that were eight by 40, whatever, that they would want to pull into a site. But the ordinance has adopted limits it to tents and canopies only, so the trailers would not be permissible. The maximum size of that is 2,400 square feet. This recommends that only one consumer fireworks stand be allowed per zoning lot. So, if you're Ace Hardware or if you're the corner of Ninth and Cloud where Genesis and Big Lots are, there wouldn't be four stands or three stands. It would be one stand per zoning lot. That's as this is recommended. The ordinance based on a lot of the National Fire Protection Association standards, but there are all kinds of setback things. 50 feet from a street, 100 feet from any residential property line, 50 feet from any other structure, 20 feet from a property line when there is no structure, 10 feet from any parked vehicles. Planning Commission recommended a 300-foot separation from any fueling facility. So, if you think about Dylan's Superstore or Sam's Club, they've got big parking lots and open area, but they also have fueling facilities there. So, we would want to maintain a separation there. And Planning Commission thought 300 feet was prudent. This would allow a storage container or shed up to 120 square feet for secure storage, but that would have to be at least 20 feet away from the tent. This requires that the site have an approved curb cut. So, you wouldn't want somebody setting up on a vacant lot that didn't have any driveway or curb access. That would be off limits. It's limited to zoning lots that have surplus parking. And every stand would have to have a minimum of five off-street paved spaces. And obviously, if you were up at 2,400 square feet, you would need as many as 12 spaces. Planning Commission recommended that advertising banners be allowed on the tents and one ground sign. But they did not think that having flashing signs or balloons or inflatable attention-getting devices or rotating searchlights needed to be part of the stand operations. So, those are called out as prohibited in the proposed ordinance. It also does not allow for someone to dress up as Uncle Sam or any other character and stand in the street and wave people in. So, those things are all spelled out in the proposed ordinance so that there's no question about that. The proposed ordinance would require that portable restrooms be provided on-site unless there's an arrangement reached between the operator and the retailer on the property. So, if you're at Dylan's and Dylan says it's fine for employees and customers to use their restroom facilities, that would suffice. If that's not the case, then the operator would have to have a portable restroom on-site for employees and customers. If you're going to be open from 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., you're going to need some kind of restroom access. There's some pretty detailed requirements for submitting a site plan because with all the separations and setbacks, we're going to need to know that the operator has a pretty good idea of distances and things of that nature. And we need something that's done to scale. Information either about a lease or written permission to be there would be a requirement. Sales tax certificate, proof of insurance, and a certificate that the tent is made of flame-retardant material would all be part of that. So, we have included in your packets what we have put together on a preliminary basis for an application packet that would go to applicants. And based on the ordinance adopted, the process would be that if you're an applicant, you would submit an application to the city clerk's office with a $500 deposit. Your application would be forwarded to the fire and planning departments to review for completeness. There may even be a pre-inspection involved if we can't tell from the information submitted where all the dimensions are going to work. The insurance certificate would go to the city's Risk Management Specialist for review. And if all those things were found to be complete, then a temporary use permit would be issued and the additional fee, as spelled out in the ordinance, would be collected at the time that the permit's actually issued. And there've been... We've put in the materials and in the ordinance and tried to be clear that if there's anything that's missing or the application is substantially incomplete, that it could result in a permit not being issued just for failure to submit all the required information. We've gotten some input back here from operators. The only question that we've gotten most frequently is to do with why tents only. I've got this specialized trailer that I have that I've used in other places. But that's the only real questioning that we've got about this. We may need to go back and adjust some of the things in the Section 1457-6. We want to make sure that if people read the fireworks ordinance, that they're cross-referenced over to the zoning ordinance and that they don't think that everything is contained in there. So, we'll want to link or cross-reference. And then, one item that did come up that will need to be looked at a little further. In the fireworks ordinance, it says that everything is required to comply with the National Fire Protection Association, Chapter 7. And in that Chapter 7, they require that there be a 300-foot area where no discharge of fireworks can occur around a facility. And our current ordinance says 100 feet. The sellers we've talked to said 300 feet's been the standard that they're familiar with. And so, if that's something you're interested in, then we could go back and make that adjustment before this comes back for second reading. But I'd be open to any questions you have about the application materials or any input you have about how we can improve those or make them more understandable.
Questions of staff?
This is kind of petty, but it just stuck out when you were going through that laundry list. What did you say about restroom access? It's required?
Well, we would expect that somebody who wanted to set up a tent would bring in portable restrooms. But if they can reach an arrangement, say with Dylan's Superstore...
Is it just on this one or do you require that on all of our temporary permits for that type of...
It depends on the duration. Like Stutzman's is required to have temporary restrooms there where they set up at Ninth and Cloud.
And that's what I was thinking. And they have a temporary restroom there?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Never paid attention to that.
But no, if you have... We have not required that. It's not a requirement throughout the temporary use permit. It's been things that have been looked at by...
So, anything longer than a day or a long day?
Or if there's going to be somebody employed there that's... When you're talking about hours of 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., that's a long time for somebody to be there. That is a recommendation from the Planning Commission. If you think that's singling out stands as compared to other operators or that that's not necessary, obviously, that can be deleted as a requirement.
I just found that...
But it was set up to be an either-or, that either you have an arrangement to use the restrooms or you bring in portable restrooms.
Okay. Okay, I just need a clarification on that. Thank you.
Dean, can you walk me through the effect on our original ordinance allowing fireworks? Could you help me understand the effect on that or this not to pass?
Well, what the ordinance was set up was that the only way that a consumer fireworks facility could be set up was through approval of a permit. And the type of permit chosen was a temporary use permit. And when you go to the section on temporary use permits, it itemize a number of things like mobile food vendors and flea markets and open-air markets and Christmas tree sales. It does not list consumer firework stands as something that we can issue a temporary use permit for. So, the purpose of this text amendment is to list that as something that a temporary use permit can be issued for. And then, the ground rules for getting the permit. If we don't have this amendment adopted, it's going to have difficulty having a basis for issuing consumer fireworks facility permits.
Dean, the short of it is that the ordinance that provides for the administration of the firework stands is fine, but we would have to have a land use approval to allow them, as you stated, within the zoning districts and under those requirements. Otherwise, the stands couldn't locate in the city.
Right. Or we could eliminate all the references to zoning and things like that and simply have a license. But then, you'd have to do that outside the purview of the zoning ordinance where you wouldn't care about parking or what, the property was owned or any of those things. But the method chosen was a temporary use permit and that's why it was blended into the zoning ordinance.
So, they do work hand-in-hand?
Yeah.
This is an item to implement what was already adopted.
Okay. Well, I view this amendment favorably based on what the original intent from the Commission was, though I voted against the original ordinance, but just wanted to.
Right. And that's what we explained to the Planning Commission, that it doesn't matter what your personal view is of whether we should have fireworks sold at retail or not. It's whether these regulations that have been proposed address the issues that are concerned about how they set up and operate.
And Dean, to bring this in compliance with whatever the fire...
It was an NFPA national standard that has a number of requirements for consumer firework stands. And I don't know what the basis was, but in the Kansas Fire Marshal Regulations, they had a requirement of a separation that says you can't discharge any fireworks within 100 feet of a stand. But the NFPA standard is 300 feet.
And the dealers that have contacted you said that...
They have indicated to us that 300 feet was what they'd always understood.
And then, is it your intention to change that to 300 feet?
If there's support for that in the Commission, we would go back and adjust that in the regular fireworks ordinance because that standard is in the ordinance that was adopted in January at 100 feet. And it just came up when we were cross-matching all these various separations. So, I've got the... It's in the 4257.6. It's actually in your packet in the newly adopted ordinance. And it's subsection J there on page three of six of the new ordinance. It says, "No use of consumer fireworks shall be permitted within 100 feet of a consumer fireworks facility." And the standard for distance in the NFPA is 300 feet. And so, if that was an item along with cleaning up other parts of that that you wanted to see addressed, that would be an opportunity to do that. So, we attached the adopted fireworks ordinance that's in there. And again, page three of six on item J on that page says that you can't discharge fireworks within 100 feet. And most of the sellers that I've talked to have indicated they've always understood that to be 300 feet.
Okay, thank you.
Is that something you'd like to see?
Yes, it is something I'd like to see.
Okay. Is that okay with everyone else? Okay. If we could get that in line, that would be helpful.
So, our plan is if you're agreeable with this on first reading, we'd take this and line it up with the adopted ordinance in January, make sure we don't have any conflicts, and then make any cleanup items to make them consistent.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions of staff?
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any public comment? Don, if you could just...
Don Whitman, 17 East Prescott. Just out of curiosity, there is a big lot between Santa Fe, I mean Fifth Street and Fourth Street and Center and Prescott with one house on the northeast corner of Prescott and Santa Fe. Would a lot like that within the city? Do you know if it would? No?
No. Well, the hospital owns that lot.
Hospital, yeah, I know the hospital's across the street and there's apartments...
That's not commercial. That's not commercial.
So lots like that would not be available?
No.
Okay. That's all I wanted to know. Thank you.
Thanks. If there's no further public comment, I'll accept a motion.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt on first reading ordinance number 11-10592 and request that staff clean up item under section 14-57.6 of ordinance 1110588, section J., amending it to a 300-foot distance for discharge as well requesting staff to bring back on second reading any other items that might be conflicting between the two ordinances. Second.
It's been moved in second that we adopt ordinance number 11-10592 and direct staff to proceed, proceed as previously directed from Commissioner Jennings' motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion passes four to zero. Moving on to administration.
Item 8.1, resolution number 116805, declaring the necessity of improving the water and sewer system and providing the issuance of water and sewer system revenue bonds in the amount not to exceed $39,850,000.
Mr. Franz?
Mayor and Commissioners, thank you. In 2010, the City of Salina authorized a, basically a $20 million project to rebuild sections of our water distribution system to provide for increased flow and a little better quality of water in, in those areas where there's old lines. This resolution basically reauthorizes that project and then incorporates the advanced metering system that we are proposing to install along with the project to move meters from inside of basements and houses to the city right of way. Provides for a, an immediate bond issue, immediate meaning within the next 90 days of $20,850,000, which would incorporate a $4 million project for waterline replacements, of which I believe a million dollars is already underway, under contract. And with the balance of $14,650,000 for replacing the water meters and providing for bond reserve for, for the issue. The advanced metering infrastructure project basically pays for itself through increased efficiencies in, in the metering system and increased equity among customers. And of course, the, the waterline replacement is included in our capital improvements program and is included within the current rate structure. I would be glad to answer any questions that you might have.
Questions of staff?
Rod, what would be your best guess on how the market will receive these bonds, the amount that they're issuing and with all that's going on in the world today?
That, Commissioner, is an interesting question. We have always had good response from the market. This is a relatively large issue for us, but we also just paid off some relatively large issues that were issued back in the early 90s for the wastewater plant. The, we paid one off, I believe approximately two years ago. There's another one that's going to be paid off next year for which the annual payment is about $800,000. So we've got debt moving out of the system along with the, the debt moving in. And these, like I say, the waterline project has, has been a part of the capital improvements program. It was incorporated into the current rate structures that are in effect. The AMI systems, the metering system was not, but it generates its own revenue. So we're hopeful we'd, that'd be well received. We did adjust the date that we anticipated to open, open bids recently. It's now been moved a couple of weeks later to better fit within the economic announcement schedule so that there's a little bit of time between any potentially adverse economic announcements and the opening of the bonds so we don't get them, so we don't get the immediate gut jerk reaction that sometimes happens when you have announcements come out.
Okay.
I wish, I wish I was clairvoyant, but you know, there are things that are happening internationally, obviously, that, that I suppose could have, have impacts on, on this.
Thank you. No further questions?
On the 20 million, Rod, that was discussed last year, approved last year, the metering was not a part of that, right?
No, it was not. That was purely a waterline replacement.
And, and that, that metering project will come back in, in revenues. But kind of adding on the last question that was asked, this will only bring out 4 million out of the 20 of, of that 20 million discussed in 2010.
This is the first phase of that $20 million project.
Is there any concern that the issuance of, of this, of the metering portion of this could jeopardize the, the rest of that project, the other 16 million of that project?
We don't think so.
I know we're asking for clairvoyance again, but...
Yeah, yeah. We, we don't think so. We have, you know, the, the, our utilities fund is, is, is relatively healthy. It has good cash flow. The debt levels are, are reduced on it from what they were a number of years ago, just after we didn't, had done the wastewater plant. We still do have some bonds outstanding. Actually, it used to be the Kansas Water Supply Loan Fund. We financed that last year into, into bonds that were used in the early 2000s, the late 90s to redo the water plant. We do know that we're going to be required to make some improvements to the wastewater plant probably in a timeframe of 2017, 2016. And we're just starting the design processes for that probably next year. But all of that is incorporated into the rate structures that we now have in, in effect. And in two years, we'll be redoing those rate, rate studies for the next five-year period. And I, and I think we're, we're positioned relatively well on, on the water and wastewater, on the water and wastewater funds.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any public comment?
Yeah, me again. This is a personal question. One, I want to know if I'm trying to be taken or not. I got, received a deal in the mail today that said anything that happened to the water pipe, water line on my property, I was responsible to replace it. So if they're going to replace the water meter, they're going to have to replace some of the line. And I'm just wondering because it would concern all the property owners in Salina that had water line on there if we are responsible for that water line that connects to the main water line.
I'm going to have Ms. Tasker come up and best address that question.
Okay.
The way our code reads currently, from the water main to the curb stop is the city's responsibility. From the curb stop on in to the meter, if it's located inside of the business or home, is the responsibility of the property owner. If the meter pit is located in the right of way, then the city maintains the line from the water main to the meter pit, then from the meter pit on in is the homeowner's responsibility. And I believe the information he's making reference to is there's a company that's sending that to citizens all over Kansas, trying to get them to buy what I would call insurance for, if they have a problem with their line on their property. It's not a document that's sent out by the city.
Okay. Thank you for that.
Ms. Tasker, it's my understanding that all the meters are going to be moved out to the street, though?
That is correct. When we do the meter replacement program, they will be moved out to the street. So we will have ownership from the water main to the meter pit.
Okay. Thanks.
Can I meet at the down in the basement?
Okay. If there's no further public comment, I'll go ahead and accept a motion.
Mayor, I'd move for adoption of resolution 116805, declaring the necessity of improving the water and sewer system in the City of Salina and providing for the issuance of water and sewer system revenue bonds in the amount not to exceed $39,850,000 for the purposes of paying the cost thereof.
Second.
It's been moved in second that we adopt resolution number 11-6805. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion passes four to zero.
Item 8.2, agreement with IMS Infrastructure Management Services for pavement data collection and condition analysis, project number 112849.
Mr. Stack?
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. This project is a, basically, infrastructure management update to our street system, approximately 250 centerline miles of our streets. We currently utilize a computerized system to manage, I guess, maintain all of the maintenance records that we have, how, how old the streets are, what have we done to them, what kind of condition are they in, and what, maybe, how much we have to do in the future. And thus, we are, the last time we did an update to the actual condition of the streets was in 2001. So periodically, it is good to drive the streets again or have a assessment of the street condition to see, basically, what I've listed there in the bullets, where identify immediate maintenance needs. Helps you to take the look at the whole city and compare all the streets to each other and to a certain standard and then say, okay, these streets are needing some work sooner than later. You can monitor the pavement condition over time, which, that just shows the effects of the treatments that we've used. So whether a micro-surfacing at a certain age or a certain time is good or bad, or is a melanin lay better, or is rehab just, it's crack seals and those type of things. So it, it helps you develop that kind of effect of the treatment. The third bullet talks about network preventive maintenance strategies. There's a lot of different preventive maintenance strategies that exist. And so are the ones that we're using the best or are there other ones out there? How long do these treatments that we use last? And then what kind of improvement to the street do you get once you do those treatments? Fourth helps you develop a road maintenance budget. It's more of a proactive approach to say, okay, we, depending on the need or the level that the city would like to see the streets at, whether it's, you know, whatever level is set, and then based on, okay, how much is that going to cost? And then vice versa. Well, we really only have money to fund this, so this is the level we should expect. Last thing is also you can look at, if we do a, you know, a concrete road in 2002, how well did it do? Or based on other, or compared to other roads that we did in, you know, 1990, did those, was that concrete mix good or was this one better or did this one not last as long? Same with asphalt as well. So those are the benefits of a periodic pavement condition and survey. So this is, this contract would basically survey all, all the streets that we have, paved streets, not the sand or gravel or brick streets. Would survey all the streets in town and we'd get an actual overall condition index. And that's, the condition indexes are based on distresses of the road, which is different surface defects or rutting or shoving or cracking or long cracks or short cracks or random cracks, depending on what, what's out there. It rates all those things and puts them into a, an actual condition for the road. And we believe that if we were able to do this every so often, that we could report back to you on, are we improving our road condition or is it getting worse? And what, what reasons we have. It just would help us in our developing a, a more of a proactive strategy to deal with our streets. Currently, we utilize our Cartograph System for some of the information to keep track of things and to, we've just recently made a, linked it to GIS, so we can tell what streets we've worked on. But a lot of the actual maintenance strategies are, are done based on just engineering knowledge, street superintendent knowledge, complaints that we receive, development in certain areas, whether we need to improve a street or whether that street is beyond its useful life and needs to be rebuilt, such as, or needs to be widened. So those are the, that's the current way we do business. And we feel like this would give us a better opportunity to improve on that business philosophy. We solicited quotes from three firms. Two actually submitted bids. We checked the qualifications of them with a selection committee composed of three city staff members and four community members. Those community members are the retired engineering group that we have, the infrastructure advisory team that we utilize for help on various issues. But this one was one where they were very helpful to look at the qualifications because both were very good companies, but we felt like IMS was, was the better, had the most knowledge, had the most experience, especially around Kansas. So we request that we recommend approval of this contract, and I will be open to questions.
Questions of, Mr. Stack?
Mr. Stack, you talk almost faster than me.
Okay.
And you're so quiet. I think I caught a little bit of what I was going to ask.
All right.
This does not include the gravel?
Correct.
Sand or brick?
Or brick. That's correct.
How do we handle that, then? Whoever, whoever goes out and determines when those streets need repair?
Those are very much complaint-based. So if, and then we have a motor grader that does a lot with the sand streets, so those are certain times of year where we, we address sand streets or gravel streets. The brick streets are more, are, they're very expensive to replace, and so it's more just complaint-based. If there's a pothole or, or a definite issue, then we go fix it. But we, we don't feel like driving those streets would give us a lot of benefit.
Well, off the top of your head, what percentage of all our streets in Salina fall into that category?
Into brick or sand?
Brick or sand or gravel?
Dan, I can answer that. We've got, we've got about 9.4 miles of unimproved surface, about 3.5%.
8.3 miles of brick. 9.4 miles of, yeah, the non-paved and 8.8, 8.3 miles of brick.
Okay. So those are not part of this?
Correct.
Survey?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Thank you.
So we have the software, but is the software just not, I mean, it's, it's sort of, what good is it without having them update it, I suppose, update the, the data in it?
It's a database that at least helps you keep track of what you've done to your roads and what your inventory is.
Oh, okay.
So it's helpful for that. But when, you really need to at least get, get an idea what your condition are, is every so often. So that's why it's been 10 years since we did the last assessment. We feel like this would really be beneficial to, if you can start getting points, you can start seeing how, how are your streets declining and how are your maintenance strategies working? But if you have no, we have no way to know that at this point, other than what the computer program says, well, this is the normal curve. Okay, that's not terrible, but what is the curve for Salina based on our street system, basically? And that's, that's why the condition every so often helps. A lot of cities do it every three years. It's not uncommon. Some cities do it every two years, but some takes a little longer, three to four years. It's not uncommon either.
Yeah. Commissioners, one of the benefits is, is it provides good characteristics about your streets, material types and condition and all that. But you can also use it, there's a lot of other information when you look at the location of those street segments. If you said, in this area of town, I want to look at the overall condition of streets versus this other area of town, you have the capacity to, to query your database and do that kind of thing. And then I believe it links to the GIS, so it gives you the capacity to look at it graphically. So it's a complete inventory of all the characteristics, the technical characteristics of a street, which is really cool. It also has performance information and... of a street, which is really cool, but it also has performance information, and if you really use it to the full advantage, it actually helps you cost out maintenance options to figure out the most cost-effective form of maintenance for a particular street segment based on those characteristics and its condition. So that's really pretty cool, and I don't know if this does, but a lot of them even do some aging, but you wouldn't age out over 10 years. You know, might help you two or three, four years in, and about three to five years, you go and you go and get an updated data on condition, just like this.
And this RST equipment is not something that's, it's cost prohibitive to actually acquire ourselves?
Yourself, yeah, they are very expensive machines. They have, I don't know how expensive, but there's only a few companies that do this, and they have lasers and computer setups, and they're pretty impressive.
Yeah, okay. All right.
Is there a particular time of year that they do this?
Yeah, just basically from spring till fall, so it's not good during the winter, typically, but their plan was to start in the spring and finish it up early summer.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any public comment?
He satisfied me about the brick, because I know there are quite a few bricks in this one area. Talking about streets, I have often wondered why, on Fourth Street between Prescott and Crawford, up to that point, there is roadway on each side of the railroad track, but on that side right there, on the east side of the track, it's, and when cars are parked there, there is basically just enough room for one car to travel on that road, and I've wondered why they never put a road on the other side like the rest of them were.
I don't know, it's, I'd just go over to Fifth Street and call it good.
I know, I do too. I don't know, I hit fourth, I hardly ever hit fifth, I hit a third, which third's bad enough too sometimes, but I was just often curious, since there was track, you know, roadway on each side of it up to that point, but they've never done nothing ever since I've lived here, so.
Yeah, I don't know if we'd have a quick response to that question right now, but...
We can sure look at it.
Okay, yeah.
Because it makes, you know, you have to zigzag each way when you get back on to, you know, Fourth Street from, if you're going south, you have to zigzag to get it over there to the west side, or if you're coming the other way, you still have to zigzag, and of course Crawford carries, and Prescott too, carries quite a bit of traffic, and so there are some people that don't pay much attention to the stop signs on those streets. Thank you.
Thank you, Don. Okay, any further public comment? If not, I'll accept a motion.
Mayor, I'd move for approval of an agreement with IMS Infrastructure Management Services for Pavement Data Collection and Condition Analysis Project 112849, in an amount not to exceed $40,000. Second.
It's been moved in second that we approve city project number 11-2849. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, same sign. Motion passes four to zero. Is there any other business?
Mayor, I would move that we recess into executive session for 15 minutes to discuss with legal counsel matters subject to the attorney-client privilege, for the reason that public discussion of those matters would waive the privilege and adversely affect the city's interest in the matters, and reconvene at 5:10 p.m. Second.
It's been moved in second that we recess into executive session for 15 minutes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, same sign. Motion passes four to zero, we're in executive session. Do we expect any action?
No, we do not.
Thank you.